Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for February 10, 2015. Before we get going, we'll have Mr. George Monroe. George, which church now?
Evanston Avenue Baptist.
Evanston Avenue Baptist Church. You'll be leading us in prayer before you decide you're going to move to Arizona or something and leave me here, right? Oh, doggone it. But please, come on up, join us, or lead us in prayer, and you will follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? I, dear heavenly Father, again we thank you for the privilege that we have this freedom to meet in this way, Lord. We ask you to protect our mayor and our manager and our commissioners and our clerk, Hood, that you undertake for them. In view of this meeting now, I will give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
There.
Absent. Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
All accounted for. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk, summary of request, to approve minutes of the January 27th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Purchase of vacant land at 2112 Sampson Street, CNS. Summary request, to approve the purchase of vacant land located at 2112 Sampson Street from Jan Wood for the price of $23,600. Staff recommendation, to approve the request to purchase the property. The purchase price was reached from the recommendation of the planning department's evaluation based on the SEV and assessing records. 2015 Dozer Rental for Beach Leveling, Department of Public Works. Summary request, staff is requesting permission to enter into a rental agreement with Contractors Rental Corporation out of Grand Rapids, Michigan, for a John Deere 850K WL-T cab dozer for leveling sand at Pierre Marquette Beach. Staff recommendation, approve the request. KEPS Technologies Incorporated Telecommunications Permit Engineering. Summary request, approve the request for permit from KEPS Technologies Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign the permit. Staff recommendation, approve the permit and sign the documents. Management Agreement Fisherman's Landing Finance. Summary request, attached is a proposed renewal agreement for management of Fisherman's Landing for 2015 through 2019. The general terms of the agreement are the same as before with the following exceptions. The proposed agreement covers a period of five years which can be terminated by either party with a 30-day notice to the other party. A non-disparagement clause was removed. Staff believes Fisherman's Landing Incorporated is in the best position to manage the facility and continue to oversee its operation. Staff recommendation, approval. Banking Services RFP Finance. Summary request, the city recently solicited proposals for banking services. In accordance with city policy, the three banks have physical locations within the city where invited to participate. Fifth Third, current service provider, Huntington and PNC. Chase Bank also presented a proposal. City staff spent a full day interviewing the banks and viewing online product service demonstrations. Interviews were conducted prior to opening price proposals so that staff could evaluate service depth and quality independent of pricing. The RFP results are summarized as follows. Chase had a gross annualized price proposal of $69,542.35. Net annualized cost, $20,042.35. Financial strength, four stars. Fifth Third, gross annualized price proposal, $38,678.32. Net annualized cost, $5,678.32. Financial strength, five stars. Huntington, gross annualized price proposal, $56,843.76. Net annualized cost, $29,343.76. Financial strength, five stars. PNC, gross annualized price proposal, $37,808.19. Net annualized cost, $10,308.19. Financial strength, four stars. After reviewing proposals and ratings, staff recommends that Fifth Third Bank be selected to continue providing this service. Staff recommendation, selection of Fifth Third Bank to provide banking services to the city through the year 2021. Community Relations Committee recommendations for the various boards and committees. Summary request, to concur with the recommendations from the Community Relations Committee February 9, 2015 meeting, to accept the removal of T. Arnold Bozart from the Local Development Finance Authority due to recent retirement from the Merrick Building and to appoint Kevin Rico and Andy Whibley to the Local Development Finance Authority and appoint Charles Anderson to the Citizens Police Review Board. Committee recommendation, approve the recommendations of the Community Relations Committee from their February 9, 2015 meeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion?
Item B.
Are there any other items? Okay. Vice Mayor?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item, was it B Baker?
B. B.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item B. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we approve the request to purchase the property at 2112 Sampson Street for $23,600.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Rensselaasipica, to purchase the vacant land at 2112 Sampson Street for $23,600. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes, I'd just like an explanation. I think maybe the audience would like to ask maybe, we're buying an empty lot, what's the program, where the funding comes from, and what you're gonna do with it?
Absolutely. We are pleased to purchase this piece of property in Bluffton neighborhood. It's a neighborhood where we have yet to build or rehab an affordable housing unit. That's what our office does. We look for areas that we've not been in, and in the last 15 years, we've been everywhere but Bluffton, East Muskegon, Sheldon Park. We've been in Oakview once, so we'd like to go back there as well, but there are some neighborhoods that we just have not been able to find a rehab or a piece of property to build on. And in this case, that was a private owner, and she's been wanting to sell it for several months, and guess the price is right, and we're gonna move forward and build an affordable housing unit. Yes, we're very pleased.
When you say affordable housing market, were you build a house of market value of that particular area?
Oh, absolutely. Anytime we build a house in the city of Muskegon, we look at the character of the homes that are in that neighborhood. We look at, but we certainly won't build any house, a new structure, less than three bedrooms and at least one and a half baths. We usually try to put two baths in any house. Everyone appreciates that at purchase, that we have more than one bath, but in any neighborhood, we want to make sure that we look like the rest of the houses in that area. So, and with any rehab, we certainly want to bring that rehab up to current standards. So if there is a rehab of a one-bath home, we add another bath for the comfort of the family. But we use home dollars, which are from the government, to make sure that these properties are affordable and sold to families that qualify.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Can that roll call, please?
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And speaking of rehab homes, new business, item A, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 1581 Division, CNS. Summary request, to approve the attached resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Shamika L. Ross for the rehabilitated home at 1581 Division, which is part of the city's home program. Ms. Ross, purchase price for the home is $74,900. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would be very pleased to move that we approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale for the home at 1581 Division.
Second? It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rensselaasipica, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale at 1581 Division. Neil, you're back.
Awesome, I'm back. Well, this is one of those affordable housing units, and in this case, it was a home that was rehabbed in 2008 along with five other homes. So that year, we kind of blitzed the whole neighborhood revitalization, and we still have a house that's left for sale, and so this is one of the last ones to be sold, and it has a beautiful pool in the backyard, and this mom of two, and she's expecting any day, and that's kind of why she's not here tonight, so I told her that I would let you all know that she's resting. She works third shift, and she has two sons, and I believe that this baby is going to be the third son, so she's excited but very tired, so I told her I would give her condolences for not being able to be here.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or comments from this commission?
It's just always a pleasure to see three more, soon to be four more residents to work through.
There we go. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May we have item B, please?
Amendment to the Rental Property Ordinance, Public Safety. Summary request, two small amendments are needed to the recently adopted rental property ordinance. The requirements for an ID was inadvertently removed from Section 10351 E6 and has been added to this version. Section 10351 F2 states the insurance policy must be on file in the clerk's office, making it more cumbersome on the customer to visit two offices. Under the proposed language, a copy of the insurance policy can be collected by Safe Bill or any other city designee. Staff recommendation, approve the ordinance as presented.
Commissioner Hood?
I move to approve the ordinance as presented, amendment to the rental property ordinance.
Support. Did you beat him?
That was a tie.
Okay. Then I'll give it to Commissioner Johnson. It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the ordinance amendment for the rental property ordinance. Discussion? Roll call.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item C, please?
Consideration of bids from Muskegon-Webster Avenue from Ninth Street to Spring. Engineering. Summary request, award the reconstruction contract using base bid for Muskegon and Webster Avenues from Ninth to Spring Streets to Jackson Merkey contractors out of Muskegon Township since they were the lowest responsible bidder with a total bid price of $4,367,455. Furthermore, it is kindly requested that staff be authorized to remove and/or adjust quantities regarding landscaping and stamp across walks to meet budget constraints. Staff recommendation, award the contract to Jackson Merkey and authorize staff to make the necessary adjustments as per the summary of request.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we award the contract for Muskegon and Webster to Jackson Merkey and authorize staff to make the necessary adjustments as per the summary of the request.
Support? It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist, to award the contract to Jackson Merkey and authorize staff to make the necessary adjustments as per the summary request regarding bids for Muskegon-Webster Avenue from Ninth to Spring. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just feel it's important to let people know that over 20 years ago, members of the Nelson neighborhood who live in the Heritage Village area of the neighborhood formed a committee to see about getting their front street turned back to local use, and we're finally reaching the finish line of that long marathon, and through the efforts of the neighborhood, through the city, certainly the assistance and cooperation of the Michigan Department of Transportation, we've got a very functional new business route through the heart of our downtown that does not disrupt a very solid piece of neighborhood, and so I'm very pleased that we've reached this point. It's been a long, long journey, and it took a lot of people working together to get to this point, and I think we're all excited to see the work get started and looking forward to the completed product at the end of this construction season, so thank you, Your Honor.
And should we approve this, Mr. Al Chatel and Steve will be issuing shovels to each one of us, and we'll be going out and starting tonight. No?
This is Jackson, Will.
Oh, Mr. Jackson, well. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
I'm just interested, I know that this project came in under the engineer's estimate, and it says that there's no budget action required at this time, but what financial impact is this gonna have that we're gonna, it's more than the great amount that we solicited was not quite the 4.3 million, so how's that gonna affect our finances?
Well, it won't affect our budget this year because it's gonna obviously be spread over two budget years, they won't get the project done. Mohammed and I talked about it earlier today, probably by the time we come to the July change of budget year, the project won't even quite be halfway done.
Okay.
So what we have budgeted will be more than enough to cover the work that gets done, but we can talk a little bit about it if Mohammed wants to address it. We budgeted $3.3 million for the road portion and about $1 million for the water portion, so there'll need to be some sort of adjustment. At some point, we'll need to have some additional funds to come up with.
In the future fiscal year?
Yeah, in the upcoming fiscal year.
And so that will affect our ability to spend on other roads, possibly?
Potentially.
Commissioner wants to elaborate.
I'm just, I'm just the village.
Right.
That's the county village.
The county village, right. Commissioner Johnson?
Given that we're spreading it between two fiscal years for the budget, what's the rationale for removing or making adjustments for landscaping and stamped crosswalks if that's likely not gonna be happening until the second, the next fiscal year?
Essentially to get it down within our original project budget, the best we can, the closest we can.
So there's a very, there's a likelihood that for the next fiscal year budget, some of those things may be added back in in terms of the stamped crosswalks or crosswalk lights, perhaps. And also, we talked about putting bike sharos, since we couldn't get the bike lanes in there, we talked about putting bike sharos in lieu of the lanes to connect the Lake Shore Trail going through downtown, so, yeah? Does that show, does that show me bike sharos?
Well, I was hoping the camera would focus, but yes.
Okay.
Just remember, that's paint.
Yeah.
That's the least expensive part of the project.
Yeah, well, I mean, the paint for
Sharos.
For the stamped crosswalks as well.
Well, no, you got the stamp, and then stay.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaasipica?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fantastic. Get to work, Steve. So you can say hi to Deb first. Before we move on to any other business, I would just ask the commission, fellow city workers, and the public to keep in mind your best wishes and prayers for our DPW Water and Sewer Supervisor Dave Smith and his family. Dave has been experiencing health issues and is currently confined at a nursing home at this time, but I encourage everyone to keep Dave and his family in your thoughts and in your prayers. Thank you. Any other business? Vice Mayor?
One item, at our work session where we talked about the proposal for income-limited season, senior housing, and today with our Community Neighborhood Services request to purchase a lot where we haven't built one in that neighborhood before, I've raised this from time to time, and I really, and I'll be raising this again at our goal-setting session in a couple of weeks, but I really think it's time that we enact a, what's known as an inclusionary zoning requirement, that when you're, and basically what that means is if you're doing any kind of housing development, that a specified percentage of that needs to be set aside for income-limited households, that you have a mix of people. Economic integration has shown time and time again to be an effective way of improving the quality of neighborhoods and just improving the quality of life in a community in general. And usually, most places, it's usually a range, it's not necessarily a hard and fast percentage, but it's usually, you know, it usually works out that 20% to 25% of the units would be income-limited, but that way, you're ensuring that there's a mix of housing available in every neighborhood, and we're not excluding anybody from anybody in any particular neighborhood. And areas where they've done this, this has been real successful out west, Colorado was one of the states that really pioneered this, there's been a lot of success. And I really think that in light of some of the proposals that we've had come down over the last few years, that we should invite that kind of ordinance so that developers know right up front what we're expecting, and the kind of community that we need to be open to be. You know, I don't want to have an area where people feel like they're not allowed to live there, and sometimes I feel sometimes parts of our city have a certain sense of that, and I don't think that's healthy for us as a community, and I don't think that's healthy for us as a thriving, healthy city. So, two cents, I'll be bringing that up again at the goal-setting session. I think it's time we take action on that.
Thank you. Anything else? Not, we have time for public participation. I have a request by Diane Foster. Ms. Foster, you've requested 10 minutes. I take it you're representing business, correct?
Yes.
Okay. May we just need your name and your residence address, please?
Hi, Diane Foster, 135 Ottawa Street, Muskegon, Michigan. I just wanted to come and talk to the commission for a moment. I have decided in good conscience I cannot enter into this contract with you, so I will no longer have anything to do with the MM Medical Marijuana Program in my building. I will continue, however, to have a business there. My first dentist appointment's tomorrow. I'll be running for office also. I've had enough of the state and just the whole roller coaster that I've been on since I came here. Somebody put my profession into this act. They used my profession, and they have eviscerated it, and I'm only here for patients and their protection. I don't care about my business, period. I don't care about the product, period. I care about the patients, what you're asking of them. I've clearly had enough of all of this. I'm sorry you all don't understand this the way I do. It's a shame, because you've not been in this field for 45 years, I have, since I was a candy striper girl scout. I made it a point to be an advocate for patients my whole life, and I don't think I apply to anything in here, and I know I don't for a fact. So, I cannot conscious, in good conscience, enter into this contract with all of you and the city, and I'm sorry that I have to not be able to help my patients who now officially stopped me from helping my patients, and I want to thank you, and you have a good day.
Thank you, and best wishes, Ms. Foster.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the clerk how many applications we've had for the license under the ordinance?
I believe 12.
So we've had 12 businesses that at least have applied?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the audience who would like to approach and address the commission tonight? If not, oh, ma'am, please.
I did just fill out one of those sheets, though.
Oh, no, please. We just need your name and residence, please.
My name is Sandra Boone Thomas. I live at 1272 Lawrence Avenue. I wanted, the questions I have, I wanted someone to help me as far as directing me to the right office or the right person. The question I had, one of the questions I had was, the gas tax money that we do receive from the state of Michigan, I would like to know how that is distributed to the other cities in Michigan as far as that goes. The other question was, the millage is coming up by the county. The question I had was, I know we have the county millage, and then the state has their millage that they'll be having in May, and my question is if, was there any thought as far as if that one passed, would that have any effect on our millage that the county is asking for, in the sense of reduction of our county millage for roads? And the other question was, property taxes. I don't know the formula, but seems like to me that we should try to figure out a way to divide the summer and the winter taxes up more evenly than they are being distributed at this time, for the fact being that the winter one, in my case, is two and a half times what it is in the summer. And to me, the summer is your hardest time of the year as far as for payments for your gas, and right now, the electric bill is going bananas out there, and then you've got your water and you've got your cable. And my concern is if we could, if with the state, I don't know how it's figured, and so my, I'm asking for a direction as far as talking to the individuals that control that are, where they can direct me.
Or the smart person?
Mm-hmm. Whatever.
Stay behind when the meeting's closed and we'll map it out.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Are there any other members?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Bordeaux, 1376 Ellendale. I am a medical marijuana patient. I have a shaking disorder called benign tremors. As I'm sure you can see right now, I'm shaking pretty bad, so, I don't know, I just think it's kind of, I don't know, it's, it just hurts me a lot to know that the city's going against what we all, we all voted for, for, you know, for Michigan. That's all I really got to say.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I had completely forgotten about it, but we would be remiss in reminding people that instead of a city commission meeting on February 24th, there is that countywide election on the millage. I urge everyone to study the issue. It is a tax, it's for the roads, there are valid points on either side, but whichever way you decide, make sure you cast your ballot. That's the only way your voice gets heard. So... So that's February 24th, two weeks from today.
Good point. Commissioner Johnson?
Let me just add on to that very quickly to note that monies, if that millage gets passed, monies received through that millage by city residents will go to the city of Muskegon, not any other municipalities, and it'll be used within the city of Muskegon for our roads here. Yeah.
Anything else? If not, Commissioner Hood?
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second? It has been moved by Commissioner Hood. Commissioner Johnson beat out Commissioner Rinsema Savinga to second it. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Off you go.